Good, all right. Can I have the roll call, please?
Adam?
Here.
Anaway?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Kapler?
Here.
Ormsby?
Here.
Stoltenberg?
Here.
Wenland?
Here. All right, great, thank you. We had minutes from the last meeting, May 18th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the May 18th minutes as submitted. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting of May 18th, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. The minutes are approved. So, good evening. I see we have two members in the audience, and you guys don't realize it, but those are the expensive seats in the back. We do the cheap seats in the front, so two people in the audience. So, if you have input for a particular case, we'll welcome your comments at the podium to my right and to your left. We will be listening to manage regarding site plans and zoning changes and such, so we are recommending body appointed by the city council. And with that, Greg, we will begin.
Mr. Chairman, we have two cases to begin with that are somewhat associated, 22032 and 22033. It's a site development plan for Lot 1 of Utica Hills Point. And the area outlined in Aqua essentially shows 907 Utica Ridge Place as the address. It's a flagged lot that does connect out the Golden Valley Drive. Utica Ridge Place is paved in front of it. That is the means of access to this site. The zoning class is C6 Office and Research Park District, so it permits hotels within that district as a permitted use. And the essentially, what we have here is a parcel. Draw the perimeter here, the arrow around it. And it indicates that the entirety of the street is contained right in this area here within that parcel. And then there's certain easement areas as well. There's an access easement that comes in here, and that will be part of this connection for that particular site. On the site plan, there is a connection right here where parking will be shared between the two hotel establishments. They're under the same ownership, and there's an interconnection here, and there is an access easement here and one below that allows circulation of vehicular traffic. The structure will have 113 hotel rooms in it. There will also be access, of course, along Utica Ridge Place to Golden Valley Drive and Utica Ridge Road. Landscape plan is more than generous with what was provided. It exceeded the tree count, the tree factors, by a substantial amount. There's already a variance that was given for this because it was anticipated as being built out, so parking in the front yard in this area here, and this is also a front yard here because it faces out toward the interstate. Those areas were already granted a variance to permit the parking in the front yard, sort of given the constrained nature of these parcels. The structures will look like this, four stories in height. And because this is a project that is within the Uticod area, essentially, you're looking at a design development standard process for the area outlined here in this orange color. So, anything that's within it, as is the case right here at this parcel at 907 Ridge Pl- Utica Ridge Place, you're going to run into that issue. This body is the deliberating body that reviews these matters, and the ordinance, in effect, is the one that deals with other past Uticod-type issues. And let's get that up here. The ordinance number is 11-6-4 Utica Ridge Overlay District. And there are certain standards as to materials. Staff in reviewing those standards didn't really see any distinctions, given the ordinance itself, the way it lays out the materials, that there's attempt to have permanence of the materials that are used and uniformity in the materials that are used. And you already have, I gave the chairman, the materials that are there. This just simply reiterates these materials here, the drive it here, and then the semi- would be the false sort of looking, but yet still wood-looking cedar treatment and ash treatment that will be part of the color scheme that will be on this structure. Staff in reviewing the proposal of both the site development plan and the overlay district review would recommend approval of both submittals. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thanks, Greg. Mark, anything since publication and presentation?
No, Mr. Chairman, I would just say, we don't opt and get an overlay district project that comes to us. So, you know, Uticod is the Utica Corridor Overlay District, I believe is the acronym. And we do get a little bit of an architectural detail review as part of our review. So, you really have two issues in front of you, and I might suggest you make separate motions on those issues.
Okay. Questions and comments from the commission, please?
I was just looking at the exterior building materials for the area listed as allowed, being brick, EFS, glass, split-faced block, steel, stone, and stucco. I was just curious how that nichihaw fits in.
At the end of the ordinance, there's a section that deals with the permanency of this, and we would, I guess, regard it in some cases as being a substitute material because of its permanency and that it can exceed the so-called 50% threshold, as long as there is a uniformity here. And we may look at it as sort of like a maybe split-faced block. I don't know what, how we might term that substitution, but our concern is with the permanency of the material and how it's going to look in the exterior and how it holds up. I guess that's how we evaluated the, if you will, the cement-type approach or whatever they're using for that material that they've listed in these drawings. So, we looked at it as something that doesn't fall out of the ordinary, I guess. It's just a newer technique, if you will, for surfacing.
So, you're making allowance even though it's not listed on here because you feel like it's an equally durable material?
But cement is, it is listed in the ordinance. It is not listed in specifics, but at the end of the ordinance, it does talk about the permanency of materials, and it does talk about cement.
Yeah, so Greg and I did have a conversation about this. If I could jump in, Mr. Chairman. Greg and I did have a conversation about this today, and it's our thought as staff is that the way that code was written is probably not up to date with the surface materials that are available now and this stone board or cement board, as the case may be, we think is contemplated in that other permanency aspect that's provided in code. And we feel that the aesthetics match the area. We're not asking for something here by the petitioner that we think is out of character. It seems to match the other buildings in the area, other buildings around town. Actually, that color scheme seems to be the color scheme of the 2022s.
It is.
I don't know.
It is.
The brown, I would call it, tan and gray color scheme seems to be pretty popular right now, so we did not object to it. We are not architects. We are not engineers. We take them at their word that it is a durable material and would be appropriate on the surface.
It also refers to in performance standards. You go under architectural standards, it says, "Buildings within Uticod shall be constructed of quality materials to have strength and permanence." Permanence means that the buildings will age without deteriorating, given a minimum level of maintenance. The development shall recognize the strength and permanency of stone, brick, concrete, steel, and glass, as opposed to the frailty of light gauge sheet metal and constant maintenance wood veneer. So, essentially, that's the passage that we were looking at, even though it's not directly spelled out in the table. That's what we looked at. So, there's some, I guess, tolerance, if you will, for different materials within the standard area.
And if it pleases the commission, you could certainly make your motion tonight and ask for additional information on the durability of that exterior material, so you're confident that it's not going to fade or look bad or blotchy or something, you know, down the road.
Yeah, is the petitioner here?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, could you enlighten us at all on the permanency of the material selected?
Yeah.
Can I put you at the mic, though?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also am not a architect or designer, but I am representing the company. The nichihaw panels are a standard material in the hotel industry for construction today and have been for some time. We have hotels that were built, not in Bettendorf, but in 2014 and 2016, that have this material. There's been no degradation of the material since then. So, again, I'm not a technical expert, but it is the standard. These courtyard hotels, we visited one in Iowa City and one in Ames. Both have the same material on the exterior of the building. So, we just kind of, it's, it is kind of the standard.
I mean, it's also a benefit to you to have good materials for this.
Of course, yes, yeah. The last thing a hotelier would like to have is a rundown building, right?
Could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Jason Stewart.
Thank you.
So, Jason, how big do these panels come?
My understanding is that they are three feet wide by, it's either four or five feet tall.
Any other questions while we got Jason up there from the commission?
I have a question that we'll probably trickle back there.
Okay, don't go away.
In the same section, there is some language about review of proposed signs or sign packages, and I didn't see anything in the packet about that. Maybe we're not at that point yet. That'll come later.
No, that's a very good question, Commissioner. What we have for this proposed project is all on structure signage, so no freestanding signage.
Okay.
And I will say, aside from the typical wayfinding signs and ADA parking signs and smaller items, so they did not submit a sign package. They checked with me personally before they submitted, and I said, well, tell me about what that would, you know, include or include. And they said, well, mainly on building signage. I said, well, we'll do that at a later date, and we can run that through our sign ordinance. If all the other signs are going to be, you know, you know, here's the location of the swimming pool, and here's the direction for ADA parking and that type of stuff. We didn't think we wanted to kind of get into that detail here.
Okay, so no monument sign by the entrance or?
No, no monument signs, nothing like that. Plus, being close to interstate, they've got some other restrictions on them as well.
All right, thank you.
So, is this a replacement for the existing courtyard? Or is it, I don't even know if it's still, it used to stay there years ago, but is that, is this a replacement?
Site.
No, but is it replacing?
I could actually comment on that, if that's okay, if it pleases council. The prior hotel that was known as the Courtyard in Bettendorf, I believe this was two years ago, in the industry, it disassociated its membership from Marriott, which carries the courtyard flag. It went independent. It's now branded as a Sinesta Select and is actually considered a lower value proposition hotel now. It's an aged property over 20 some odd years. So, this would be a brand-new, obviously, courtyard by Marriott.
Yeah, great, okay. Anyone else in the commission?
I have another question for Mark, if you don't mind.
Yep.
So, in an overlay district, since we only have a couple of them, when we're talking about materials and, like you said, congruency in the area, isn't part of the reason for having this selection of materials so that you said, like you said, it all fits in and it's kind of an entrance point? Bettendorf looks, looks really nice aesthetically as well. So, what other buildings in that area have this kind of material on it or have something that you would seem similar? Because I don't remember seeing anything in that area like this.
Yeah, so I don't know that anything in the, in the, in the areas is particularly the same. Of course, this would be the hotel coming in after the other hotel was taken down, so the first one. I would say more of just a modern look is kind of what we saw, and we thought that matched where the bistro is and those other, those other buildings. But are they the same color? No.
I was just thinking, like, material-wise.
Yeah, material-wise, I don't know. I didn't really have the ability to judge that, but we looked at it more from the contemporary look they were trying to bring in. Does that match the area? There's, you know, it's still kind of developing. There's the, there's the, where the bistro is and the coffee shop, but the big, the big dog was the hotel that was there that's now gone, so this is going to kind of be the anchor. So, maybe it's more, well, they match this. This is, this is the big shining piece, I would say.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
The anchor, maybe, to use a retail term.
In my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, I guess, we leave that judgment up to you. We, as staff, we're not offended by it, but we're not designers either.
Is Utica Ridge Place, is that a private street? It's a public street, but the?
It is now a public street. It was originally plotted as a private street a year, Chris, a year and a half ago. Maybe at this point, the home, or the business owners and their association came to the city with the proposition for us to take ownership of it. So, we did work in agreement, so it is now a public street. And Janessa, in looking at the Google Street View, I think the Home Two Suites right next door?
That's what I was just looking at.
I believe has the nichihaw light gray panels on.
I was just going to chime in, that the adjacent Home Two Suites, which we also own and operate, does have nichihaw panels.
Similar color scheme.
So does the Milton.
Oh, does Milton have it, yeah.
So, you'd have gone through the same process at that time?
With them?
Because the overlay district was in place then?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, this is before.
It's been there, of course.
The commission, but it's been in prevalence before.
Yeah, different staff, but it's been there a while.
Sure. Okay, well, thanks for your time.
Anyone else? Any other comments from the audience? Nope, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 22-032, the site development plan for Utica Hills Hospitality's proposal.
I'll second. Okay, great, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-032, 907 Utica Ridge Place, the site development plan portion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 22032 is recommended for approval. 22033?
I'll move for approval of 22033, the review of building materials for 907 Utica Ridge Place.
I can second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-033, the review of the building's material and approval of the composition of those for 907 Utica Ridge Place. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 22033 is recommended for approval. Greg?
Next case is 22036. It's a site development plan for 3340 Utica Ridge Road. This is also, the structure's addressed as Utica Ridge. It's 3390, so it has more than one tenant. Future land use for the area is urban medium intensity, and again, it's only a stone's throw away from this locale right here, which we just discussed. So, it's under the same C6 zoning as what we just saw, the, again, the Office and Research Park District. This parcel was originally Lot 15 of Summit Hills Commercial Park. It is since the area outlined here in red, and what you have is this parcel or this piece right here, coupled with another piece that was taken away to allow the entry for Utica Ridge Place. So, what you have is this remnant now that constitutes the site for what we're looking at tonight. The interior is being redesigned as a daycare center, and the exterior here is a recreational area for the children. That area will be fenced in like this, and there is no design review in this instance under our ordinance in this regard. Most of it's all interior, and then the fence outside is not a wall, so it doesn't constitute that. But the parking, we counted to make sure that anything coming in here is proposed as office and some other uses would meet the standards that are within our parking ordinance, and it, they do meet those standards. Staff in reviewing this proposal would recommend approval of the site development plan with the conditions that are listed in the report. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Mark, anything from staff? Nope, okay. All right, questions and comments from the commission regarding this case?
I have one.
Yep.
One of the slides that you showed us, Greg, I counted four addresses for that building?
Yeah, there are a number of addresses. The general one was?
Four tenants?
Those are set up, there were tenants in there at one time, and the addresses are somewhat established to subdivide the interior, so that you had a general address at one time of 3390, and then as it got subdivided within the interior, other addresses were assigned to different businesses.
Okay, so this is only for a portion of the building, and is the remainder of the building occupied currently?
I believe the area here is about to be. The area that's in gray is not occupied. I believe there's a new tenant that is looking to move in.
And I don't know that it's our role to look at tenant compatibility, but I think the uniqueness of the daycare might be something we would look at as far as you have pickups and drop-offs and a lot of traffic, and how does that work with the other tenants in the building and the use of the space?
No, they, they meet the separation standard for maneuverability within the interior. The parking, again, we did run a more intense count for this portion that's unused, and then we used the actual amount here, and we had surplus spaces, even given this consumption here of about nine spaces. They still met the parking standards for what is anticipated to go into the building, and there's a great deal of maneuverability throughout. And then there was also the time factor, pickup and delivery, you know, for kids, so those hours may not correspond to what else is going on in there.
So, Greg, along those lines, that's one of my questions. I'll bootstrap on, where is the primary pickup-drop-off entrance to the, to the operation?
I believe it is in this area right here.
Okay, and so, one of my concerns is the flow, because other daycare providers we have in town, as you noted just now, they have peak periods. It's early in the morning and late at night, go-home and come-home time, go-to-work-go-home time. So, the stacking, the queuing, the rotation would be something I'd like to hear a little bit about, what the plan is for that. And then the other component, when I looked at that chain-link fence, and you mentioned it's not a wall, so it's not in our purview, but in today's world, with people with distracted driving, with people in chases and other things in this crazy world, I would be putting a great big series of boulders or something that would make that whole outside area completely vehicle-proof, because a chain-link fence will not do anything to stop a car that gets thrown and driven, stepped on the gas or reverse. It'll just, I just think we need to have some kind of input on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could jump in, I think staff has been discussing this, and we would like to, and we don't have them here tonight, but we would like to take some of those considerations that are more on the safety side, the public safety side, and have a consult with our police chief and fire chief with the petitioner.
Yep.
I think that would be good, and I, I believe the petitioner is aware of all the state laws and regulations, but we just want to make sure that our, our public safety officials know what their plans are from a safety perspective, from a hardening perspective for all the things that happen in the world today. As city planners, I'm not sure that that's the appropriate discussion for us to have, but we have thought of it, and we are working to set that meeting up.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that's great. Even when I looked, and I got to go back to find the picture to the head, the fence, I mean, that's showing like a five-foot fence or something. You reach over and grab a kid in today's world.
Yeah.
All those things that would, you know, and I'm not telling them how to do their business, but I would just say, if I were a customer, I'd be wanting a lot of answers to a lot of those kind of questions.
And it is a highly regulated industry. We know there's state-level sign-offs that are going to have to occur. One of the things that occurred to me, just as a, you know, I'm a parent of adult kids now, but, you know, you could just see into the fenced area where children are now. I'm not sure I'd be comfortable with that anymore, and 20 years ago, I wouldn't even have thought about it.
Never thought, yeah.
Should there be some screening? I don't, I don't know what those answers are. That's not my expertise. We have the case before you, but I think those points can be shared, and I will work to schedule a meeting with our police chief and fire chief and the petitioner.
I think that'd be great.
But just to be sure, I understand, the, the outdoor recreation area, the drive runs parallel to that.
It does, well, that's, that was part of my concern. It's like, that is a traffic pattern, and a lot of ingress egress right around through their circulation in and out, so with a corner, especially that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Greg, is there, is there a special use also coming for this?
Special use permit for this, and at that time, these issues can be brought up as well at that meeting, and if it's conditioned to put bollards maybe around?
Something.
The area, and then also directional arrows to facilitate traffic flow for pickup and drop-off, for stacking. I mean, those are elements that can be added here. And then also fence height. They have to get a fence permit for this structure.
Yeah, good. Questions or comments from others in the commission?
No, I just think, like you said, I'd like to hear a little more about like the entrance and how it's going to be?
Yeah.
Planned out there.
Is, I don't know, is the petitioner here, Mr. Chairman? Do you know?
Oh, I saw two hands go up. Well, either one of you or both, well, if we get you up at the podium, that'd be great.
I'm Andrew Dasso with Streamline Architects. Craig Shannon is the one that sent the application, and he couldn't make it today. But, you know, there are two points of access and also a way to circulate traffic within the parking lot after children or students are dropped off. The actual entrance is more towards the center from what he had pointed out.
Where the tree is, maybe?
Yeah, it's to the right of the restrooms, if you could see where the restroom banks are.
Yeah.
Which I think?
It looks like a hallway, or maybe it says, "Existing man entry reused." Is that the note?
Correct.
That's the main entrance. Okay, so that'll be the pull-up and drop-off.
Yep, and then I, you know, I assume the cars will have an option to either exit off of the secondary street or circulate the parking lot and exit onto Utica.
Yeah, which doesn't leave it a lot of stacking room from blocking the north-south aisle or actually from the road entrance from Utica Ridge. I mean, I don't know, if you look at 20-foot car lengths or something, you don't have a ton of stacking. Any idea of the volume of students or clients?
Children.
You guys have a question about the operation?
You know, I, from a, I have three little girls. You know, you're expected to walk your child in. There's a secure vestibule in, as part of the design, so that students are actually brought in, dropped off.
It's a park and bring them in? It's not a open the door and let them out?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's better.
Most of these facilities are.
Yeah.
One thing, Mr. Chair, I wanted to add, just a comparison, Kinder Care that's located on 18th Street, maybe think, they do have bollards adjacent to their fence.
Okay.
So, when that discussion happens, there is a precedent for that having already occurred.
They're a lot farther from the street than this is.
Well, well, but they're off a, a public street, not a drive.
Right, not a drive.
Right, right.
On a corner.
A little different, yeah, off an arterial, but yes, they do have them.
It's, yeah, you're right. It's an arterial street.
Okay, good. I feel better if it's not a drop-off. You can see how outdated I am from the drop-off thing, and not that I just like slowed down and let the kids out at that time, but or anything like that, but depending on how they were that day, so, yeah.
Fucking rule.
Yeah, yeah, no, good. There's questions or comments from the commission?
So, right now, we have malt, we have two in and out. My point's vigorous. Is it within the commission's power to say that it's a one-way circular drive? Is that within our scope?
I think that might be best addressed by the Board of Adjustment. I defer to our counselor.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, that's not typically something that the, that the commission, you know, we get into right in, right out, that kind of thing. I don't know if that's what you're talking about here. Are you talking about the, the interior?
Yeah.
If it's, if it's?
Just from a safety perspective.
Yeah.
Car's going only one way.
It's really beyond the scope.
Okay.
I think traffic on Utica Ridge is going to take care of some of that.
Good point.
First time somebody tries to make a left out of there, they're going to learn to go the other way.
At 5:00, right.
It's the natural order of things.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I would just say, the first thing I noticed when I looked through this is exactly what you were saying about the safety of the chain-link fence around there. I, I realize we can't have the petitioner do something that's not required, but I would think your insurance company might make you do it. I would, I would definitely want something that are a little more permanent to avoid cars that drive on their own. There is a five-foot buffer from, kind of surrounding the fence as well.
Of what?
Currently, it's shown as concrete, like a concrete curb, six-inch curb sidewalk surrounding.
Currently, it's shown as concrete, like a concrete curb, six-inch curb sidewalk surrounding.
That's between the fence and the driveway?
Yes.
Okay. So that white ring that we see around the recreation area, that's a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I'm looking at this right, the exit coming out of these two hotels is going to be right in line with where this play area is going to be. Somebody happens to park their car there to run into the hotel, and for whatever reason, they don't put it in park, it's heading right that direction, and a five-foot sidewalk isn't going to stop it.
Six-inch curb.
I'll launch it.
That's a, but that street is actually out of this picture.
It's on.
I'd say it's about a 20-foot grassy area.
Mm-hmm.
And you've got the dumpsters there, too. We're just, we're just giving you some thoughts here for things that you don't want to ever see happen.
So from a procedural perspective, this has to go to the Board of Adjustment for a special use permit.
Mm-hmm.
And in that discussion, will all these issues enter into that? Are they relevant to issuing a special use permit?
Yeah, I'll do my best to answer. So I think in their reviewing of the special use, they'll get to make a decision. Is, is that use allowable by special use? And they can also talk about the safety and arrangement of that use. So we're giving it the larger 30,000-foot view. This is an allowed use. I think they're going to be able to more, more directly talk about that particular use in that particular area. That's the special use about it, right? So they'll get to weigh in more on the details. Their exact reach, I, I defer to Chris, but they'll have some detail.
So there's, there's specific factors that they look at when determining whether to grant or deny a special use permit. It's in the code. It's, it's really looking at the proposed use, the intensity of the use, the nature of the use in relation to what's around it. I think it, they are really the body that, that looks at that issue. And they will very, in, in great detail, go through that. I think that that's probably the more appropriate place for, for that safety discussion and whether that, whether that use is, is appropriate for this location. So I hope that helps, but they, but they, that's, and that's a, you know, they are the deciding body. It doesn't go to the city council.
Okay, so, again, from a procedural standpoint, we're looking at a site development plan. If we approve that, does that have an influence on the special use?
No, it do, it doesn't. I mean, we've had this issue before, that kind of what comes first.
Yeah, right.
And they're really separate decisions.
Okay.
And there are specific factors that they look at in determining whether to, to grant the special use permit.
All right. I hope they give a fence variance for a taller fence. Like, that would be a lot safer than, like you said, four foot, where you can, I don't know. Someone like, just again, like you said, as a parent, like, I would think of all those people in the hotels coming and leaving and coming and leaving and, you know, just.
Watching out the window.
Yeah, or just reach, I don't know. You people today are just, like you said.
Climbing the fence from the inside out?
Or that, children climbing the fence, or someone reaching in and pulling out. Four foot doesn't seem adequate.
I'm sure they'll all be supervised while they're out there.
Absolutely, that's a good point.
Not like a doggy daycare.
That's a good point.
They have a way to tag.
Mr. Curran?
Yeah, that's true.
Is it appropriate for this body, could they determine, as opposed to the board, the height of the fence that they would request as part of the design element of this, as well as the bollards and any directional flow, if you will? I guess that's directional flow isn't maybe the big deal here. But regarding the structure of the fence, though, is that something that would happen with the BOA? Or can it be, because other, there've been cases, I mean, in, in the past, where this body has sort of conditioned some things. And I'm just wondering, where is that dividing line between what the board would do and, and what the commission can do here for that?
So in the code, no special use permit may be granted unless the location, nature, height, walls and fences are appropriate. I mean, so, so I mean, I guess the, the? The Board of Adjustment does look at fences. I mean, I think this body, if, if there are issues that you think are appropriate to note on the site plan for council, your recommendation is to council, not to the Board of Adjustment. So I think if, if there are anything that you want to note in your recommendation, I think you should do that. But the, the Board of, the Board of Adjustment makes their determination based on the section of the code that sets forth what standards they look at when determining special use permits. If, if staff has a recommendation on this, I think Greg or Mark, you should, you should let this body know that.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. I, our, our, our staff recommendation is that, that can handle it to BOA. It's in code. We think that's the appropriate place to handle it. We are aware. We are humans. We're parents. We've thought of the same issues. But we're looking at it from a zoning perspective. We think the zoning in the, in the, in the site plan are appropriate, and we should, we should mash up those details at the Board of Adjustment, like our code says, and, and.
And as long as I know that, that's how this is proceeding.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that.
So, yeah, and I'm, I'm getting comfortable. So just from a timing standpoint, would this go to council before Board of Adjustment? Because if it, if it went to council and we made a recommendation, but it had already been through Board of Adjustment, and for some reason, Board of Adjustment said, or didn't address that issue, or let it go, then I'd be more concerned about my recommendation to this council.
Off the top of my head, I would, I would prefer to hold this back until we've gone through both bodies before I present it to council. I think I have that ability. I think that's within my authority as Director of Community Development, and that's what I would recommend.
And that, that makes the most sense, and it's the most logical, and they have all the information they need.
Right. Any other comment from your side?
You know, although, you know, we're all parents, I'm, you know, the use, I don't think can dictate the height of the fence at this point. We have to compare it to the, the zoning laws. So what I'm, you know, they're going to go through permitting and with the state that will require the height of the fence and precautionary reasoning for the operations and how they use the space that they're in. As a designer, we have to meet the same laws. And, you know, the size of the courtyard was dictated by the state requirements for 30% of the student body times 40 square feet. So it's a, it, there's a lot larger body that has to rule this in order for them to get their permitting.
Okay. Thank you. Any others from the commission? Okay, can we have a motion?
I move to approve case 22-036 with staff recommendations.
I'll second, Joe.
Okay, and do we need any clarification about the timing or anything in there? With the recommendation that it be held until Board of Adjustment and that we recommend, do we need?
Pretty condition number two, Mr. Chairman. In the recommendation, it says a special use permit needs to be acquired prior to the site development plan being considered by the city council.
All right, I'll take that.
Yeah.
Why don't we just make it subject to staff recommendations?
Here we go.
You smart lady. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-036, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign? Okay, thank you. Case 22-036 is recommended for approval as noted. Thanks. Okay, so site development plan. Does that take us to commission update?
Yes. Thank you. I'll make it quick. We had, you gave us a recommendation, and council approved an issuance of an RFP for a comp plan update. We've received four responses. They all, they all look to be good responses. We're going through them right now. We just got them on Friday. The companies that responded were RDG, Confluence. RDG did the plan previously. Confluence, MSA, and Vandewally, all well-known firms, and we're looking forward to going through those. We're also working with our partners in Scott County and the other cities on a hazard mitigation plan. You probably weren't involved in that too much, probably five, six years ago when they did it. These federal law around that plan now is requiring more public input. And so I'm actually required to kind of report to you some of the basics of this hazard mitigation plan. So I'll be bringing those forward, you know, kind of a commission update part of the meeting. You really won't have to make any, any motions on them, but just so you're aware that we're going through that planning process and preparing that plan. That's really important so that we can receive FEMA funding relative to any disasters that may occur in our community. So every city and county has to approve and adopt a FEMA hazard mitigation plan, and this is our time to update ours and do that. And then I will note that we're working with Iowa State University Extension to do another P&amp;Z BOA training for our city council members to attend. But if any of you missed it, or you just want to come again, or come in person, because you did it on Zoom last time, I will share those dates with you. I'm still working on nailing down the dates.
It was good, yeah.
It was interesting.
So it's the same content?
Yeah. It'll be the same content. Might be a different presenter, I don't know. But we've just been working on getting those dates. And if there's been, you know, new state law passed or something that may impact it, it's always good to get an update. Certainly don't have to attend, but I will share it with you. You're welcome to.
Okay.
Cool. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Nope. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming out there. Appreciate it.